Okay, and we're gonna try and reconvene and see if everyone can hear us. Bobby, do you want to continue? Thank you.
I'm pretty much done. I'm just looking for your approval to award this bid to seen sincere transportation. If I reach out to them and it becomes an issue with the number of vehicles, then we'll have to readdress that.
Okay. I mean, it's our first time we use them, but if their service is anything like what they've discussed here, I mean, they've really put a lot of detail into this proposal, considering what the other did, you know?
I know.
So hopefully it works out. So, anyone like to make a motion regarding the transportation?
There's a resolution included.
Do we have to read the resolution into the record?
If it's part of the package, you just reference the resolution that's attached in the substance of it.
Okay. All right. Anyone like to make a motion regarding the senior transportation?
I'll make a motion to award the senior transportation bid to sincere transportation contingent upon Bobby, Ms. Monahan doing some additional research to just verify the capacity of the vehicles. And in doing so, this resolution of the town council approving the bid award for senior transportation services would be signed by the town council.
And the administrator.
And the administrator. And the solicitor.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council voter, other action on consideration of retroactive veterans exemption for resident. Mr. Biagad?
Yeah, I was at a town event not that long ago, sometime late summer, and I was approached by Mr. Tassoni, and he explained to me that he qualified one year, and Jen, if you want to just help me out with this, if I go awry here, but he qualified for the veteran's exemption. However, the realtor and the people who he entrusted to fill in the proper paperwork did not submit the proper paperwork. And for that reason, it wasn't because he didn't qualify, and it wasn't because he didn't attempt to get the proper paperwork in, but it was because the wrong paperwork was submitted. So, the gentleman is a Vietnam veteran, and I think that extra consideration should be given to him in an attempt to retro his, it's not a lot of money, I think it's $350. I think that extra consideration should be given to the gentleman because he did, it's not like he didn't, he just waited or whatever. He made the attempt, it was the wrong paperwork, and I'd hate to get some, have somebody, a veteran, a Vietnam veteran lose out on a nice little benefit just because of a technicality. Now Jen, can you tell me, did I go wrong anywhere?
Just a few things.
Okay.
The gentleman purchased the home in August of 2023, and we never received any paperwork for the exemption. So it wasn't that we received it and it was incorrect, we never received the application. Then he came in August of 2024 asking why the exemption wasn't on his tax bill. So my assistant explained to him that you have to apply for the exemption, and we had no exemption in his file. He stated, I believe he stated, that his attorney in the closing was supposed to submit it. If that does happen, we have to have him still fill out the application, and we need his DD-214 and a copy of his photo ID. So we would have sent the gentleman a letter with the application and probably also the lawyer. We don't have anything in his file from a lawyer stating that it was submitted to us and that we sent a letter asking for more, obviously the application, the paperwork that goes along with it. So when he came in a year after, we didn't deny him, we just said, fill out the paperwork, we will apply it to this year's tax bill and going forward.
So he's squared away for going forward?
Mm-hmm.
He just wasn't, for the year that he was questioning?
So for 2024, he's not receiving that tax credit because he missed the deadline.
And, but had he, but he had, like the house was, he owned the property, the house was purchased on time, too technically, he could have gotten, had he gotten the paperwork in, correct?
Yes. He has to have it in by, everyone has to have exemptions in by December 31st of that year.
Okay.
Depending on which exemption it is.
Okay. And how much money are we talking about?
For his, he qualified for the veteran exemption, and it's $350.
Is this an annual application, or is it just once until you sell the property?
Yep. So it's just one-time application. Sometimes if the auditors need information, we might run a whole mass mailing for them for renewals, which I did, I actually did it for some senior exemptions and veteran exemptions back when Cynthia was here, maybe two or three years ago. But usually, no. It's, you come in, you apply, and then you don't have to reapply. If something happens with the property, say, there's an ownership change, or they're adding someone, we would review it, notice that there's an exemption, say, his name was coming off, but it was going into a trust. We would send a letter out stating, we need a copy of the trust, if you're still listed in the trust, you can still receive this exemption. If not, then we would let them know that it was gonna be removed. But they don't have to apply every year.
Madam President, Ms. Tassoni would like to say a couple, and say a couple words on his behalf. You have to come up, though, and speak, and the mic.
Jen, just don't go too far, okay?
Hi, I'm Mike Tassoni, and this is my issue. I'm not sure what the ordinance reads, but if you require a DD-214, that could be where the, where the mistake came. In the National Guard, they give out, they give us a, I think it's called the NGB Form 22, and that gives the entire history of our military service. And that's what I submitted, and that's what my lawyers told me, they submitted when I closed on the property. And I never received a letter telling me to submit something else. So if your ordinance requires DD-214, you might wanna change that to, I don't know, to require also the National Guard form as well. Any other questions?
Well, you're all squared away now, though. I mean, going forward, you're all set, you handed in all the right paperwork.
I haven't seen anything going forward.
Jen?
She told me, I went in personally to give her the form, and she said I was all set, but my, my, what do you call it, my mortgage company is still charging me for, they pay the taxes, and they haven't told me that there was any reduction. I'm still paying the escrow amount. So I'm not sure if I got the reduction or not. No one has given me any indication that I did get it.
The exemption based on his application when he applied, it'll be for your next bill coming in July of 2025 and going forward.
So it's not for this year either?
Nope. You didn't, you didn't process an abatement for this year because you missed the deadline to submit the application.
Okay, so.
Can I have the acceptance to move?
Could you use your mic?
I'm entitled to it. I'm not trying to take anything that I'm not entitled to, so I'm just asking you to.
This wasn't saying you're not entitled to it. It's just, we have deadlines because we have to stop off the tax rule, and if, we have a deadline because if we start to accept it after that certain deadline, we would be prorating and supplementing and abating tax bills and on exemptions all year long. So normally, when someone purchases a home, whoever that owner was, December 31st of that year, if they had a veteran exemption and a senior exemption, they, the new owner would receive that exemption until the following year. Because we don't change the, we don't change the account number because I have to stop at a certain point.
I think the previous owner was a veteran also, if that's what she's saying.
I don't know if that really is relevant, though, is it?
Well, I'm just explaining the whole process of why we have the deadline, and that's why we can't prorate, if we would like to, we can, but we have to, I believe, have to change the ordinance because we would be prorating and abating bills all year long.
Not necessarily. Just because you do it for one person and has an extenuating set of circumstances, it doesn't mean that we have to do it for everybody.
It's not fair to do it for one person.
See, the problem is, too, the seniors, the Vietnam veterans are now seniors, okay? And they're gonna, they're gonna need help, they're gonna need more assistance in doing things like this. And Mr. Tassoni needed assistance getting this done, and he thought it was getting done for him, and it wasn't. And I'd like to help the gentleman, considering his service to our country.
Madam President, I have a clarifying question. Jen, based on Mr. Tassoni's explanation of the sequence of events that he believes to have happened, where he, you know, submitted the form that you were mentioning from the National Guard, could you have potentially received that, and because it didn't fulfill the qualifications, you may not have pursued the veteran's exemption?
No. So if we receive something from himself or the lawyer, regardless if he did it or didn't qualify.
Okay.
We would notify that person. So usually, it's by letter, letting them know, you have to fill out an application, or we didn't receive X, Y, and Z, and we need to receive that in order for you to get the exemption.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we receive something from his lawyer, which I've been doing this seven, eight years now, lawyers usually, at the closing, would not submit the application. And if they did, they would have that, the homeowner come in.
Okay.
With the application. Or they would call. We get calls all the time, asking, how would someone apply? Do you have this exemption, that exemption?
Mm-hmm.
So, and if we did receive something, again, it would have been scanned into his chart.
Okay.
And then we would have sent a letter with the exemption stating we need his photo ID and the paperwork.
Thank you.
Nothing against you, because you know that, yeah. But anybody that has served this country, and there's a mistake made, we should have exemptions for them if this has happened. I know of a case in North Smithfield, four terms in Vietnam, came back injured, decided to buy a house, build a house in North Smithfield. They used to walk here, pay the bills all the time, no one mentioned exemptions. So whatever that bill got, they paid it for 50 years. And during that time, we had our own little person going through this town, shooting at people sitting in their home. This man gets shot in the throat, incapacitates him even more. Okay? And I think Mr. Keen was another person shot. When he died, and the wife were getting things together, I said, well, you're both in your late 70s, we're exemptions. They didn't have one exemption. It would take two minutes when people come in, just to go through a few minutes for them. Some people may know, I was lucky because my husband was attached with the National Guard, et cetera, NMP, and the people there, as time went on, mentioned to me about what I should do. And I was lucky enough that we paid our mortgage directly, but he depended upon someone else. So there's sometimes you say no, but other times you should not. There has to be exemptions.
I can't speak for prior assessors, but if someone, a new owner comes in, we normally tell them about the benefits that we have in our town. We also have a letter that we send out, my office sends out with a, all new owners, they'll get a sales verification form, it just helps us with the assessed value. And there's also a form that goes in that letter, letting them know about the exemptions, the due dates, there's like some general information on that form that goes out. And it's also on the tax bill every year, and I believe it's on a list.
Well, Jen, I think you do a great job, and I'm not saying that.
It's not an attack, it's a process that has to have exemptions to.
Janet, can I, I just have a question, because you're, the, not yours, the application says to be handed into the tax assessor's office on or before March 15th, but then you said it needs to be filed with the tax assessor by the end of December. So what are the two dates?
So, in the ordinance, it states December 31st of each year, but if they come in, as long as they're the owner as of December 31st. Because we have other exemptions, so our tangible forms are extended to March 15th by the state law. So, and we have a disability that they need their income, so that's extended to the 15th. So I accept them up until March 15th, but they have to be the owner as of December 31st. Or 65, if it's a senior exemption, they have to be 65 as of December 31st.
Okay.
So I do accept it up until the 15th of March.
Okay, got it.
Madam President, Mr. Tassoni, have you tried contacting the closing attorney from your closing about this?
No. They, no. They told me that day that they submitted it.
So the expect, your expectation was that they were going to handle this paperwork on your behalf?
Yes, on the day of the closing, they assured me that they were also submitting that form, that National Guard form.
And they were paid for their closing services?
Yeah, I guess so. For some reason, I didn't have closing costs. The, I think the prior owners paid them, thank God. But they weren't my personal lawyers either, they were through my realtor.
Mm-hmm.
But I can contact them, but.
I would, you know, suggest trying to contact them, you know, see if.
I'm not sure what that's gonna do, because I'm asking you to make the exception. If they say they submitted it, that, I'm just gonna tell you that they submitted it, and she's gonna say they didn't. So I don't know what to go from here.
Is there room to negotiate here?
I mean, I understand the point, but you would have needed a signed copy of this application, right, with a copy of the photo ID, like there's a process that goes along with this, right?
Some people have to, well, everyone has to submit their dates of service, and then we have to take that, those dates of service and match it to state law that lists, as long as you've served during the time you qualify. Not everyone qualifies for veteran exemption.
I served 27 years, four months. I think that's within the limits.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, we very much appreciate your service. Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we issue Mr. Tassoni in the RAS a tax credit for the year 2024 for the amount of $350.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Rule call?
Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. What was happening tonight? Okay, discussion by council voter, other action on appointments of town boards/ commissions?
Where do we start?
All right, do we want to start with the Asset Management Commission? It looks like we have one person whose term is coming up for expiration, and they do want to be reappointed. Mrs. Nordstrom?
Madam President?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to nominate Paul Nordstrom to the Asset Management Commission for a five-year term that expires November 30th, 2029.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. The next one is down to Budget Committee. It looks like we have two seats that are up, and they do not want to be reappointed. And we also have two applicants that do want to be considered who are in your packet.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Doug Oger and Kevin Newton for the Budget Committee.
You can do one at a time.
Doug Oger for the Budget Committee.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. And then there's another applicant?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Kevin Newton also for the Budget Committee.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And these are all for three, both of these are for three-year terms, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. And now we do have another one that will be open, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we just advertise for that one?
Mm-hmm.
That's a pretty important one. So the Charter Review Committee?
Madam President, are we prepared to do this? We didn't really set up this committee yet.
Yeah, if someone wants to make a motion to table this one for now, and we can come back to it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table the Charter Review Committee appointments in addition. I also think that we do have four great applicants, but I would also like to see, you know, some more applications for this committee as well. So I think that would give us more time.
We also have to narrow the scope and give them direction and figure out what we're gonna do there.
John, do you want to table to the second meeting in January? Gives us some time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll table that till the second meeting in January. Did we do a motion for that?
Oh, I did, and then I trailed.
So second that motion.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
This is the table?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. The next one is the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Jones, his time is coming up, and he has expressed that he would like to be reappointed. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to reappoint Paul Jones to the Economic Development Committee.
Second?
And that's a five-year term?
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, this town administrator, did you want to make that?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Okay. And we just have to approve it? Do we have to do a rule call on that one?
Yeah, because this particular one is appointed by the town administrator.
Okay.
So if you make a recommendation, you have to vote to approve in this particular case.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. And we don't have any applicants for the Conservation Committee? Okay, we'll just continue advertising there.
But we do have reappointments, right? Do we need to, motion to reappoint?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, four reappointments.
No, the Conservation Committee.
Oh, 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 I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, we don't have anyone for Conservation, yeah, okay. Economic Development, we just did that one. Yeah, Groundwater Protection Committee. We have, basically, everyone is expiring, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone want to make any appointments to the Groundwater Protection Committee?
Madam President?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Newberry. She will be a new member of the committee.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes.
So we, Cynthia Carroll.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Cynthia Roberts to the Groundwater Protection Committee.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
No.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Carol Drainville to the Groundwater Protection Committee.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes.
You want to go ahead? I would like to make a motion to reappoint Leanne Gillette to the Groundwater Protection Committee.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes.
Clarifying question on Gail.
So that's appointed by the town administrator for Gail Burleyhoff? Did you want?
I'd like to make a motion to Gail Burleyhoff to Groundwater Protection Committee.
Okay.
We don't have to vote on that, I don't think you just gave your blessing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then we have a couple of others that do not wish to be reappointed, so we have some other openings on that, one that we can continue to.
You also have a, Madam, you also have a council member that needs to be appointed at some point.
When would we do that?
You could do that now or next, if you have a page to do it.
Is there anyone who wanted to be the liaison to this Groundwater Protection Committee?
I'd be happy to be the liaison.
I'd like to appoint Rebecca Christoporo as the council member on the Groundwater Protection Committee. Is that also a two-year term?
It is.
Okay.
Both terms, co-terms as a council.
Okay, that's a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biagad?
Yes.
Mr. Christoporo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Miss Alve?
Yes. I would ask that we table the Hollowell Review Committee also, just because as we had the last meeting, we were talking about maybe disbanding this committee as well as the multi-generational, and then combine, so if we can just table this one until we can get the resolution to where we want to have it. Okay.
I'll prepare a resolution of a new building committee.
Mm-hmm.
I'll leave the amount of membership blank, we'll have to decide how many on that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to.
I'll.
Do you want it to be tabled for the second meeting as well?
Yeah, you want me to make a motion for that? No, okay. Yes, David's saying yes.
Oh.
Make a motion. Make a motion to table the Hollowell Review Committee appointments until the second week of January, that's a motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Historic District Commission, we have three people whose term is up and all three of them would like to be reappointed to a three-year term.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Harris.
That's a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Joel Rochon to the Historic District Commission.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes.
We have one more seat.
Yep.
I'd like to nominate Daniel Kutcher for the Historic District Commission.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Next one is the Juvenile Hearing Board. We have two seats that are coming up for, to the end of their time, and then we also have an applicant in your packet.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Jason M. Proctor to the Juvenile Hearing Board for a three-year term.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. And then we have one more seat.
Two more.
No, one more.
No, just one more.
What about the Kayla Lenoi person?
She applied.
Yeah, she's an applicant, but there's only two seats, so.
I got you. Okay, I will nominate Daniel Taylor to the Juvenile Hearing Board for a three-year term.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. And the applicant was also interested in the Senior Advisory Committee, so if there's an extra seat there, we can maybe revisit that one.
Okay.
Multi-generational Committee, I'd also ask that we table this to the second meeting in January due to the same reason as the Hollowell. That's a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
All right, the Municipal Building Review Task Force, I would ask that we also table this one until, we have an update with Signal Works, because there is RFP going out for a project manager, so if we could just table this one until the second week of January also, that's a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Parks and Rec Commission, we have seven seats basically expiring, and we have some of the applicants who want to be reappointed, and we also have a new applicant in your packet.
He's already appointed to the by the town.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. With town council approval, so I would like to appoint Ann Keeler-Lilly to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do you want to do it individually or together?
Can do them all together, right? Because we're just approving, right? Okay.
Also, I'd like to appoint Jennifer Keith to Parks and Recreation Commission, also appoint Gregory Bernett, Parks and Recreation Commission, appoint Melinda Howard to the Parks and Recreation Commission, appoint Theresa Chris to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Gabriella Stella to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And also, I'd like to appoint Louise Macron to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Louise or Louis?
Louis.
Louis. Louis.
Louis.
It's a guy, Louis.
Oh, I'm sorry, Louis, my bad. Did I only, did I?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So Cheryl, so Cheryl doesn't want to be reappointed.
The other one did not.
Well, Matt Tech, he's with the school, so.
In the camp.
In the camp, yeah.
He does live in town now.
He does?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with all that being said, we would have one vacant seat on that commission.
Yeah, so one vacant seat right now. So can we, we'll just add that to the ones we're going to advertise.
And that would be the non-voting member, do we need to specify that?
No, Matt Tech is the non-voting member, it would be Cheryl Marandola that doesn't want to be reappointed.
It says Tech doesn't want to be reappointed on this.
Oh, so you didn't get back to him.
And Miss Green, she tells us. He doesn't want to be?
He hasn't responded, we've been trying to contact him.
Okay.
Says he doesn't want to be reappointed.
It says no.
Didn't hear from him.
Oh, oh. All right, so we'll, so make a motion to approve the town administrator's appointments to the Parks and Rec Commission, that's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Personnel Board, there is one person that's term is up and they also want to be reappointed.
I'd like to appoint Irene Donnelly to the Personnel Board.
Do we have to make a motion to approve it?
We do.
Make a motion to approve the town administrator's nomination.
That's a motion, and there's a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I have David.
I made the motion.
And who's second?
I think Claire did.
Okay. I didn't hear her, sorry. Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Okay, Planning Board, I would actually like to make a motion to request that we table the appointments for the Planning Board until we can have it on the agenda to discuss to possibly revisit the terms for some of the members, for the members of the Planning Board.
Is there an issue with the terms?
Just because we have members who are coming up to their 10-year term and it's just something if we want to discuss it, I'm just putting out a motion whether or not it passes, that's.
I'd like to just clarify, Madam President, pursuant to the Charter, the president must serve until success is designated. So there's been a consideration by the president of possibly revisiting the ordinance that limits it to just two to five-year terms. That may not go anywhere, but right now, you don't want to do what you don't want to designate someone because then you don't have the flexibility of considering the ordinance change. Right now, you don't do anything and the people continue to serve and the board continues to operate. So it's really not on for discussion tonight, the ordinance, it's on for discussion and explaining, but I'm glad to know that the not appointing someone tonight will not interfere with the planning board activity, that's my only point, they continue to serve.
So somebody that doesn't want to be reappointed would still continue with their meetings until the term, until we.
You're right, but you still remember until you reappoint someone, yeah.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
I agree with you on that, but at the same time, Mr. Pilate has been sitting here for like three and a half hours now and, you know.
It's been fascinating.
Riveting. You know, and I appreciate the fact that you and Mr. Ashambo showed up for the reappointments because there should be more people, and if you want to get put on a board, you should be, you should be here.
Just a tutorial.
That's right.
Counsel, I didn't mean to draw, but I did inform Mr. Pilate of the fact that there would probably be no action on this tonight because there could not be any action in particular ways.
Right, right.
The only action from Mr. Pilate tonight would be a negative action.
Right. Because it's not on the agenda, so.
I think he was aware of that, that's why you wanted to make sure he was aware of that. I just want you to understand context.
Okay.
Right. So we're considering, I'll be good with the terms.
So you made the motion.
Did you think he was sitting here because we were going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. So Joanne, we'll, I'm going to work with the solicitor and then we'll give you a date certain.
Okay.
I'll have the meeting next Thursday.
You are.
Thank you very much.
In the same capacity, correct?
Correct. Everybody remains in their capacity until the council designates a successor, and that may take, if they can proceed with an ordinance change, that'll take at least two council meetings and a public hearing. If you know, you're very familiar with that, Mr. Pilate. I am.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's not that I wouldn't want to stay for.
We, yeah, we get it. We appreciate you. Okay, so the Public Art Committee, Public Art Advisory Committee. Everyone is pretty much up for their term and we do have a couple of people that want to be reappointed.
I'll make a motion to reappoint William Lindcourt to the Public Art Advisory Committee for a term of two years.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes.
Madam President, I will make a motion to reappoint Sarah Hemendinger to the Public Art Advisory Committee.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes.
And then I just want to make mention with that being said, that means we have six vacant seats on the committee.
Yes.
This committee's going the way of the dodo bird. At one time, in 2020, it was a, you turning people away.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They were all so anxious to get out of COVID. Do something.
Probably right.
All right, Public Safety Commission, we have one seat that's up and he wishes to be reappointed for a three-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sean Russo to the Public Safety Commission for a term of three years.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, it looks like everyone is up for renewal, and then there's pretty much everyone, there's several people that want to be reappointed for a two-year term.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Linda Tebow.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. DeCristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
I would also like to put my name in to continue as the council member. I've been on that board already. I would just like to continue in that capacity as the council member on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Joyce Dolbeck to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joanne Paulus to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for a two-year term. We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak? Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Okay, we have two more. Two more?
Yes.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Guy Boulay.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
And I'd like to nominate Irene Shuchuk to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
That's a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. And then also, I'd like to appoint Kayla Lenoy to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for a three-year term. She originally applied for juvenile hearing or senior citizen advisory.
Second.
That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Sewer Commission. We still have two vacancies there.
No applicants?
No, certainly, no.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll go to the Town Council Appointed Miscellaneous Office Holders.
I'd like to nominate David Igliosi as the town solicitor for a two-year term.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Madam President?
I would like to
Oh, go ahead, Claire.
Okay, I would like to nominate Stephen R. Ashambo for his position, which he's extended himself and done a good job.
And that's for the Assistant Town Solicitor?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. If you want to skip down to Aaron, we want to do the
Yeah.
I was going by this list. I think she must be covering this right.
Well, that's the one we're replacing. All right. We didn't get there yet. So so the probate here is where we would just put the name that we
Exactly. Is it one of the, there's several names. Now would be the time to if you have, if you want to make a motion, now please, I want a probate judge.
I'll make a motion to nominate Tracy A. Lloydnon for the probate judge position.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. And you'll contact her, Joanne?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Madam President, I will make a motion to reappoint Valerie Oralana to the Municipal Court Clerk Administrator position.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Aram P. Jarrett to the Municipal Court Judge Position.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. I'll make a motion to appoint David Tebow to the Veterans Advisor for two-year term.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Zoning Board, we have two seats that are coming up, and both would like to be reappointed.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Michael Motson to the zoning board. Reappoint Michael Motson to the zoning board for another five-year term.
Second. We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Andre Gill for reappointment to the zoning board for a five-year term.
So one-year term as an alternate, right?
Oh, one-year term as an alternate. Sorry about that.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopher Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Town Administrator, did you want to do your appointments, or you?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to appoint Peter Bagdina as the senior city manager director. I'd like to appoint William Bernard Bernardini as the electric inspector. I'd like to appoint Phil Paul plumbing and mechanical inspector. I'd like to appoint Linda Tebow as the senior citizen advocate. And I'd like to appoint Stanley Zubac as the trade board.
Okay. Motion to accept?
We don't have to approve those.
No.
Discussion by council over other action on approval of purchase of ADP's time and attendance, time collection and PTO management module. Mr. Sanos?
Yes, so the council last meeting had approved the reserves. One of those items was time and attendance, so I'm just looking for the council to approve rolling out time and attendance for the town of North Smithfield.
Madam, if you might also clarify that the $12,000 assumes 100% participation in the program. There's no question by the police department. I've spoken to the fatigue, and we're going to have a sudden discussion of participation. If for some reason, they don't have to participate pursuant to the union agreement, then the $12,000 is prorated down purely on per employee basis. So this would be just
I just have a couple of questions. So with this one, the amount of the time clocks, just does AP, do they do the geo fencing, where you can just use your your phone, or?
They do allow it, yeah, and that's not of any charge. That's something that we will be just looking into as well for admin staff, policing.
But like to do away with the time clocks altogether, can can we just go just strictly to the geo fencing with your with your phone?
It's more of a matter of privacy that I'd have to look into, because we would require people who are doing that to have their location on their phone, on their personal phone. So that's something I would want to look more into before that's even discussed with, you know, as an approval. But I didn't know that that is a thing in terms of geo fencing in proximity to the town hall, but I knew it was a capability to have on your phone and anywhere.
Yeah.
You know, if I was to come
They can bring it in as much as you want them to, like, so they couldn't punch in, you know, until they hit a certain part of
Right, a certain radius.
The parking lot, right?
Okay.
They can expand it to however you want it. And obviously, if it was a different building that they punch into, they couldn't just drive by, like, the police station punch in there and then drive to, like, DPW or something, because they wouldn't be in that time clock. But it's a savings if they do offer that.
Okay, that's good to know.
And then I didn't notice what kind of training they're including in this package. Do they give you like a how much hours, or?
They didn't say how many hours, but they did mention, because I haven't gotten that far as of yet, but they did mention that for the first few payrolls, there will be someone dedicated to North Smithfield helping us walk through the step A to Z the entire time.
And, sorry, did you have a question? And then it just, it talks about the PTO management and paid time off accruals. But would it work for the same as comp time? Can they do the rules for comp time and
Yes.
PTO and all that?
Yeah, there's a lot of nuances that'll come with that because of how the police is structured. That's going to be something I have to dive into with the chief and IBPO and ADP on that type of dynamic, but as, from what I had discussed with the people at ADP, they had said that this is something that can be done. We just have to figure out how it's going to look.
Do they give a timeframe, like, once you start building, how far out before we would actually start?
They said probably implementation from start of implementation to finish is probably about a month. But I'm not sure as to start of the implementation, because this is a very in-depth project, and I would like someone in the seat of benefits and payroll position before, because I would need someone to, you know, flagship that before I can dive into the project.
And then just one process question. So I noticed, like, a lot of the invoices go strictly to your personal, not your personal, but your work email address, like ASAP. Do we have a AP mailbox, so, or general mailboxes, so that it's not going to people's individual mailboxes? So if there's ever turnover for any reason, like in the clerk's office or whatever, that even tax assessor, like, do we have a generic mailbox for a tax assessor or building, or that people can send things to, especially accounts payable?
For accounts payable, we have sorry, can you give me one second? Okay. We have one for town hall, but not for so we have, usually most of the accounts payable either go to me or Marie. And whenever there is turnover, what we'll do is we'll make that see Marie is the accounts payable. Someone else comes in, it gets shared. Yep, so they can see everything that comes, and we'll have, we'll have vertical six turn on a response, so that if they do get emailed, they say to email this person going forward. If we were, it would be an extra expense to have another email address. It would be another license that we'd have to pay for, but it is something, obviously, that's, we can be discussed in the upcoming budget, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, especially for invoicing, because I don't know why invoices would have to go in, you know.
I constantly get a ton of invoices, yeah.
Go to, like, just an AP, and then obviously, AP would have an AP inbox and
And accounts receivable too, and for tax collection, yeah. I think that's a good idea.
How's it currently done? How's payroll currently done? Paper time sheets?
Yeah. Yeah. Trying to update that, trying to get new.
The great thing about this is it provides a more comprehensive accounting in the case if there's ever a litigation issue or something. Now we have a lot of backup on it.
Yeah.
It's a real good step forward.[1630.86]